Present, so we can open the meeting. Call the meeting to order at 6:31. Take a roll call of members present. Roger Hoyt, present. Walt Meisner?
Present.
Richard Wright? And Lindsey Butler?
Yes.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
No more.
Second?
My second.
By Walt Meisner, do a roll call vote. Richard Wright? Walt Meisner?
Yes.
Lindsey Butler?
Yes.
Roger Hoyt, yes. Walt, could you read the notifications?
Yes, order and exact times of agenda items may vary at the board's discretion with the exception of public hearings, hearings which cannot start prior to the scheduled time. Agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the chairman 48 hours prior to voting. Votes may be taken. Documents submitted for review can be found under the planning board tab on the town website. The meeting is being recorded. The recorded minutes will be the official record, but written minutes will be prepared for easier reference to the topics covered and the actions taken. As this is a remote meeting, please keep your microphone on mute unless you have been invited by the chairman to speak. When the floor is open for public comment, please raise your hand using the feature provided in Zoom and wait until you are recognized by the chairman to speak. As this is a remote meeting, those appearing before the board shall be prepared to share their screen to present materials for discussion.
Thank you, Walt. First item on our agenda is a public hearing for the zoning bylaw amendments. So I will make a motion to open the hearing at 5:34 PM or 6:34 PM. Sorry, my computer won't allow me to change the time. It's still on regular time. So, a roll call of members present. Lindsey Butler?
Can we just do this?
Yeah, I think I don't.
This is for the public hearing.
Well, this is for the public.
The public hearing for the bylaws, yes. Okay, so Lindsey Butler?
All right. Yes.
Richard Wright? Richard, you here?
Yes.
Okay, Walt Meisner?
Yes.
And Roger Hoyt, yes, present. And we have Jennifer Bernie from MRPC. And we have two members of the public in attendance, Lorraine Shell and someone that has Carl's trail, you're not Carl. Okay. I will read the hearing notice. Okay, from the office of the Ashburnham Planning Board. Public hearing via Zoom Wednesday, April 14th, 2021 at 6:30 PM regarding surface water protection. Requested by DEP and the W District Review. The Ashburnham Planning Board holds a public hearing for public comment with regards to proposed amendments to 3.3 special conditions. What lands and watershed protection district and water supply protection district of the zoning bylaws. The public hearing will be held on April 14th, 2021, starting at 6:30 PM. Via Zoom meeting, copy the proposed bylaw will be available for inspection at Land Use Office or on my town government dot org. Roger Hoyt Chairman, Ashburnham Planning Board. Brief background is two components to this. The town received a consent order in 2015 containing multiple items regarding the public water supply. One item pertained to the planning board, they asked us to make revisions to our zoning bylaw to reference changes over time by DEP. We began that process in conjunction with DEP. And we received a DLTA grant from MRPC to provide review and write the bylaw changes. It also involved removal of a conflict within our bylaws between the bylaw and subsequent wetlands regulations. So that's why there's two parts to this. It's encompassed in one bylaw change throughout many sections of the bylaw and the zoning map. Anything else I need to add, Jennifer?
You're on mute.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I don't think so. I think you covered it. I do have a PowerPoint presentation that I can pull up and walk board members and the public through if you'd like. And I also have the draft zoning that I can pull up if necessary.
Yeah, we can do that. We had some. What's posted is not the final draft. We've had some edits since then. We can review that. And some additional comments from the building commissioner. She received those also in board members, so if there are any questions on what's presented so far. It will not be on the agenda on the warrant for town meeting. In May, it'll be on for the subsequent one in the fall. So if we have any, how long will that take, Jennifer?
I'll be very, very brief. I have like five slides, so I'll just I'll just hit the high notes of it.
Okay.
That works for everyone. And some of the slides you've already seen, but if there's anyone new from the public now, it's a time just to give the background. So I think I have to, let's see if I can.
I'm sure I can allow you to share. You should be allowed to share.
Okay. Host disabled? Let's see if I can. No, I still can. I'm getting the message that I'm disabled from sharing. Let's just.
Roger, you should be able to right click on the green share screen button below. And when you do that, you should be able to then go up and allow for multiple users to share screen.
You gotta love technology when it works. And when it doesn't.
When it works.
Any luck? Oh, it looks like I have it now. So here it is. Can everyone see the presentation on your screen?
I can see it now, yes.
Okay, so this, I forgot to change the date from the last time I presented on March 24th, but the slides have been updated. So just a quick reminder, the background of the town of Ashburnham was issued a consent order in 2015 requiring zoning compliance with DEP's drinking water regulations. So this is why the town is revising the bylaw and the zoning map to comply with this consent order. These are the different sections within the bylaw. So we did review this at the last meeting, but we made some additional edits. I'll just quickly go over the zoning section and then I have the map on the second page. So in section, and if anyone has questions, I can easily pull up the zoning, but in section two, what we did there was take the use tables, wherever there was the word wetland and watershed protection districts with the W and struck that out. So those have been removed from that section two and 2.1. Okay, then the second bullet here is section 2.2, which is locations of districts. And then within that section, 2.21, 2.22, again, removing those sections and renumbering, reformatting. When we were here last time, as you know, there were large, like cut and paste from the DEP's water regulations. That's been revised and refers to, just refer to DEP sections so that we don't have long text and also if there's any changes, it will always be updated through DEP. Section three is the use table, use regulation. So again, we deleted the W, which is the wetland watershed protection district from the use table. And we actually moved up the the special use table, the marijuana table, so that it is now with the rest of the table. The next section is 3.3 special conditions. And within that, you have 3.31, 3.32, 3.33. We deleted a section, so there's a little bit of reformatting, but again, removing anything to do with the wetland watershed protection district and adding a reference to the mass drinking water regulations instead of that cut and paste text that was there before. The last section is 4.2, it's the dimensional requirements. So we actually deleted this table because there was so much formatting issues. You know, we put it in a nice table, so it's easier to read, and then we removed the W section from that table. So it's cleaning it up a little bit. So that's that on the zoning amendments, and then this is the zoning map. The map, the previous map, there were conflicts with the wetland bylaw, as you know, and the watershed protection bylaw that was causing a lot of issues and concerns, so both Roger and Marshall worked very closely with MRPC's GIS director to revise this map, removing that section. So of course, the water supply protection district remains. You can see that right here where my cursor is. And your wetlands remain. But that watershed protection district has been moved and then the underlying zoning, you know, is now visible where that was removed. And so my last slide is just saying, what are next steps? As Roger mentioned, we got comments, which are very minor, comments more with formatting. From the building inspector, there was also one section, one line that could be revised that's existing to make it a little bit more understandable. The second step would be to have DEP review this revision. They reviewed the original revision and had no issues. I can't see why they would have any issues here. We just cleaned it up further and then.
Excuse me, Jennifer. Roger, Marshall's trying to get into the meeting. I'm sorry.
No worries.
I just thought Marshall was important to add.
Yes, he's very important. Is that the Richard name that I'm seeing?
No, he's in.
Oh, he's in?
Yep.
Hi, Marshall. So the last so the last would be, you know, bringing this to town meeting for approval. So I can back up or answer any questions and now that Marshall's on, if there's any questions, please let me know, but I can go back. So that's the bylaw sections, and then this is the map. So Roger and Marshall, I don't know if you have anything to add or any comments?
Just two at the moment. I did revise that provision that had to do with impervious surfaces, which I.
Okay, the very confusing section that is in the building inspector.
Right, right. And I can send that to you. Did the other? All I did was truncated one sentence and added another. It's not a big deal, but the other comment pertains to the LI district, the yellow. I'm not sure that we had totally come to a consensus regarding how to deal with that. In other words, what this map shows is not what the current zoning map shows for that district. And I thought Roger had some concerns about changing anything to do with the yellow, other than, you know, converting the well and watershed to residential.
And that's the correct state, Marshall, that we still haven't found anything definitive either way on it. The more I look, I could say it depends on the last person I talked to as what the intent was of that yellow district. So that's still to be worked on. This is the you know, I think when we last discussed this, it was gonna leave it as we showed or the RB until we found something definitive. And still haven't found that that makes it absolute either way. I found language that says, you know, excluding the W district, you know, it's this land excluding the W district, so that doesn't really tell me anything at this point. So that remains to be finalized, as does some of the final formatting of the tables.
Okay. In reviewing the annual reports from way back when.
The materials from the DSS webinar on simple district virtual schools.
I think Roger's on two meetings, so.
Okay, all I'm saying is, I can provide you with a page or so from the 1973, I think it was the annual town meeting report, or the annual report, rather. And in 1973, there was a public hearing on districts, formation of districts, one of which was the well and watershed protection district. And there was a pamphlet that was prepared and distributed townwide, apparently. And I'm thinking that that pamphlet probably has some semblance of an explanation as to why you know, we ended up with what we did. But I can't find that anywhere. It may exist in the library, it may exist at town hall someplace, but I mean, I can provide a reference to it, but I can't find the document.
And I'm gonna say, as far as that LIB district, it was added at some point. Richard, you might recite the date for it. When that was added, but as far as finding a record of.
Well, I guess, right, we would have to see if somebody could find that pamphlet to even see if there's any information in there.
Yeah, it may not be, you know, the key, but you know, it's a start.
Yeah, that would be really, really hopeful, and I think the library might be a good source to see if they have that digitized.
Well, it's upstairs, you know, in the control room, so to speak. If it exists anywhere at the library, because all the town historic documents are up there. You know, one would like to think it exists in the town clerk's office, but you know, 48 years ago, hard to tell.
Yeah. And that's made it really difficult, and I do commend both Marshall and Roger, because I know you've spent a lot of time on the zoning map, going through the history and then working with the GIS, so it's been an enormous undertaking. So it's just this final little piece that needs to be solved to kind of finalize this map.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's again, it would certainly help if we could find it, but.
So, you know, next steps, Roger? You know, when this will go to town meeting?
That will depend on when there's a special town meeting. We usually have one in the fall. It needs to be. If it's further than six months away from today's date, we'll need to do another public hearing. Which if there's any other bylaw amendments for that town meeting, it would be a public hearing anyway. So in the interim, once we get this wrapped up, we'll get it to town council for review. And it will be put to rest until public hearing is needed or town meeting.
Yeah, and I think, you know, it would be great for us to wrap up the zoning part of it, so that's nice and tidy and and then just figuring out that one section of the zoning map, so that it's ready, but getting you know, the zoning, the few edits that we have to do and getting that buttoned up. So that you're ready to go.
All right, this was in the 1973 annual town report, if I found it. There was town meeting January 10th, 1973, and it had to do with proposed new bylaw prepared by the planning board and published in a bulletin entitled Proposed Zoning Bylaw, November 1972. Copies of which are on file in the office of the town clerk. And additional copies have been made available to any interested voter at the time of the public hearing given blah, blah, blah. And copies have been further mailed to all box holders. Blah, blah. So that's the document that, November of 1972, that were or might or may not help, but anyway, it would be good to find it and put that question to rest.
Absolutely. So I think it's.
Myself, and just add, sorry, just
No, no.
In general, where there was the W district, it's just been blended into whatever surrounded it. Whether it was RA, most of it was RB, it was little instance off of Old Colony Road abutting the railroad, which is intended as the boundary of the district there, so that portion became
That was over here.
South, yeah, south by the lake there.
Lake Wampanoag, yeah.
Yeah, and then the biggest area we have concern is with the the bright yellow is the LIB district, which is a district that was, it appears to be have been based with its boundary on property lines rather than geographic or features like roads and streams and such, so it's a little, that one takes a little bit of research to figure out what was intended there.
Yeah, I mean, the existing boundaries are just bizarre. You've got a little blip of yellow, like totally surrounded by residential, so you can't get there from here. So why it exists is, you know.
Yeah.
On the current zoning map.
Again, that's why it was it's a boundary, a property line, parcel boundary, which crosses over that stream and created that little triangular peninsula that appeared. Again, most other boundaries follow features such as roads, railroads or a given distance and such.
That's right, or enough offset distance, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, you know, we have a feature of, you know, a stream thousand square feet on the other side, doesn't make sense, but so that's what we have left to research.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the map with the exception of the yellow.
Yeah. And as far as the language in that, I think we're got a rewrite of that one paragraph, Marshall, then we should be wrapping up the questions. Sarah had some questions.
She did.
So a final run through and that will go back to, I think, the planning board just for final approval, and then we will send it to town council.
It sounds good. And then I'm assuming Marshall and Roger that you'll continue researching that yellow district.
Yeah, I'll see if I can quote break through the library barrier and see if I can steal away some time to the upstairs room.
Yeah, there, when I had to go before last year, it was just make arrangements with the library or with I forget his name, but they were very accommodating, you know, tell them what you're looking for, they'll get it out for you. But I did not see that little booklet you're referring to. But that was a in the town meeting records, it's, you know, as a major rewrite of the zoning bylaw that existed at the time.
Yeah.
And then we had a map that was used for 20, 30 years or something, so.
Yeah, and
maybe Christina has one down across the street there.
You know, another place you might look, and I don't know, is your DPW. Sometimes I've had good luck where they have old maps in map drawers and it's, you just never know, just as a you just never know, just as another, you know, backup. I think your best bet is probably the library.
Library, yeah, or historical society.
Yeah.
So does anyone have any other question, members of the public like to speak about this? No, okay. Any of the board members have comments?
No, thank you, Jennifer, for your work on this.
Thank you. You're very welcome.
Jennifer.
I'll make those revisions based on, you know, Marshall's comments on that one small sentence that's difficult to understand. And then the building inspectors and then I'll get that back to Roger. So you can bring that to the next planning board meeting.
We're meeting, we're meeting on the 21st next week.
Oh, good.
Okay. And then I, then my term ends. So so Jennifer is
Any public comments or?
I asked and they, they all shook their head that they did not. So I will say, Jennifer, thank you, Mike. If we don't see you next week, this is last capacity is planning board member, but thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Thank you for all your help on this. I appreciate it.
So at this point, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing at seven oh two. I'll second that. The roll call vote. Richard Wright. Walt Meisner.
Yes.
Lindsay Butler.
Yes.
And Roger Hoyt, yes. So the motion carries. The agenda is closed at seven oh three. The public hearing is closed at seven oh three. Thank you. Thank you, Marshall.
My pleasure.
Good night. Thank you, everyone.
Hey, so that being done. The next item on the agenda is open discussion in public comment. That was Marshall saying, please let me in. So if there's any public comment on items not on the agenda. Okay. See that there aren't any. Next item on the agenda is the ANR for Far Hills. And as I have a conflict being a resident of Far Hills. And I guess essentially you could say a butter from across the street of the one of the parties involved, I will recuse myself. Just ask Richard, is the remainder of the board able to proceed with that one or?
Walt did that.
Or is Walt, Walt?
Somebody here representing?
I don't see anyone.
Maybe because it was at seven fifteen.
Yeah.
Should we?
We can, we can pass over it at this point. And if they do attend. The message I got from Heather was that it was not an urgent matter for them. So if they don't show up, we'll just continue it again.
Have they provided any backup information to your house?
I, I forwarded something, an email
Okay.
to everyone, I think, last week.
Okay.
Send it out again. I will forward it again. And I don't see anyone.
Okay, well, we can come back at seven fifteen. And jump over.
The agenda is six scenic road application, we're for pack of the road. Members to individually make it, you know, visit this. Package of road, the property and make a determination if they felt that there was anything such as trees or stone walls that was impacted that would require a scenic road permit. And often had a chance to do that myself. Didn't see anything that would be under the special permit, the scenic road requirement. There's some small brush and wide opening to an existing cart path. They don't, didn't indicate anything. If it is determined that they do need to have the scenic road permit. I told the applicant, we would discuss it tonight and schedule it for the first meeting in May. So this, it'd be just enough time to do the notifications. Any comments from other members?
I agree.
I didn't go out and look at it.
Okay. Richard?
Fine.
Okay, so I will we'll just pass on this one and tell the applicant that it isn't necessary unless something changes on their end. Okay, thank you. The next item is the new business ZBA has an application before them for a special permit for map seventy one parcel twenty three C. We have the opportunity to comment on the application if we so desire. Discuss board members if they feel that planning board is able to make a comment on that. Richard? Richard, we can't hear you.
Fine.
What's your opinion, Richard?
You can hear me?
There we can. Now we can.
I have no problem with that. The 101 project, the 119 project.
The special permit application to construct a single family residence in the portion of that lot that's in the business district.
I think it'd be a great thing for the the community to be able to be a single family home than something else.
Okay, so you're, like, my question was, are you in favor of?
I am in favor. I am in favor.
The question was, are we gonna offer comment?
My comment is I'm in favor.
Lindsay.
Yeah, I'm same with him. I hope they get it up before the pot shop arrives. That's my only comment.
Okay, Walt?
I'm in agreement.
Okay. I would agreement of that we offer them comment and make a recommendation. My opinion is that we should offer comment. I've prepared a a few comments regarding that. My feeling is that that we had not, we don't object to it on the basis that intent of zoning over the years has been residential use along Ashby Road that the business district has never intended to extend properties facing Ashby Road. My concern would be that we have expressed our opinion that granting a special permit for residents does not impact detrimentally the development potential of the other properties in the business district. It's the only stipulation I would want to put on our recommendation.
Roger, can you just repeat that last one granted?
Yeah, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna bring up what I had. I'll share what I had written.
Okay, yeah.
Just as some notes and then we can edit it and take out what we don't need and all that. But hold on a second. Just a second. Is that showing now?
Yeah, that's too much for me to put in my minutes.
Yes, we'll put this in the letter.
Yeah, I'm only joking.
Yeah, I'll just put this, you know, once we read it, I'll put it on letterhead and we'll give it to plant to the ZBA. Rather than trying, I could read it out loud or I'm trying to enlarge it so that it's can be read. We go. Participant window off to the side. Again, I have no problem taking most of it out, but it's summarizes what I said. I might as well read it then. At the planning board meeting on April 24th or April 14th. Fix that right now. Planning board reviewed and discussed the special permit request, UBA, I think that's the number. It wasn't on my application at this point to allow for senior family home to be constructed in the business district at seventy one parcel twenty three, and then it has another suffix and off the following comment for your consideration. It's indicated on the zoning map, the business district is delineated for property on portion of interstate road. One nineteen is not extended to Ashby Road. This has been consistent historically through many versions of the zoning map. Single family dwellings are allowed by right green business district, which encompasses properties along Ashby Road. This has been consistent historically through many versions of the zoning map, including when the area long Ashby Road was designated as residential B prior to creation of the Green Business District. In general, primary consideration should be for business related uses in the limited areas of business on districts in town. However, with specific reference to parcel seventy one twenty three B, I'll make sure that's the correct parcel number, which lies within both districts, a single family residential use of this property does not appear to be inconsistent with the intent of the zoning by law with respect to Ashby Road. The planning board does not object to the granting of special permit by ZBA. The stipulation that use of the property within the business district for single family residents should not become detrimental nor infringe upon the future development rights of adjacent properties within the business district. And I'm gonna take this part out. Preference is made to section five point one oh seven point one D of the zoning by law for visual screening requirements relating to residentially used premises. It does make the adjacent property where the country store was, and if they have to come for site plan review, there's a requirement for visual screening of their parking areas from residential uses. And zoned. So that's the only impact this would have for the bylaw on adjacent properties. Especially submitted Ashburnham Planning Board. So does anyone have any comment on that? Is it too long, too short, not enough, incorrect, or?
I think it's good.
You could just bear with us. I'm going to because he
Forward it to ZBA.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, we should. Thank you, Walt. You want to make the motion, Walt?
Yes, I move with approval of this letter be forwarded to the ZBA.
A second on that for someone?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Roger Hoyt, yes. Richard Wright? Lindsay Butler?
Yes.
Walt Meisner?
Yes.
Okay. I still don't see Larry present, so he apologized for not being at the last meeting. But I haven't seen him in the waiting room. I hope he didn't.
Now, do we have the applicant for Blueberry? I don't think Darren either, right?
No.
Bluefield Road, I'm sorry.
Applicant for Bluefield Far Hills, I don't see anyone. At this point, we will just continue it on the agenda the next time. Let me get how I can stop sharing here. There we go. So we still have other, the three members of the public. Do you have any comments for us? Lauren?
Here, there we go. I just had a question. Last time there was a meeting, I did ask this, but as of that time, there wasn't any change in the status of the pot shop application. Is there any change to that?
Well, we Walt, usually when we get to
Oh, that's okay.
Later, later in the agenda about other boards and stuff, but if you want to, don't mind Walt.
No, no, that's, no, that's okay. The Eddie's Flowers is revising, making some revisions to their, their plan, their application. You know, based on the comments that they heard. And my understanding is that the next meeting, when they resubmit that, the MRT committee will be recommending it be sent to the Board of Selectmen to to sign it, to negotiate a community host agreement. The process is is pretty long for them. It almost takes a year or more to to actually get it through the process because once they, they have to they, they did their community. You know, the presentation to the community, they then revised, made some revisions to their application. They've shown us the plan. They will, then they have to go to the Board of, get a community host agreement. Then they have to go to the state and get all of their licenses. Then they have to come back to us and go through the planning board and go through whatever boards that they need to get approval through for, for what they're doing. So the bottom line is, is it's still in process. There hasn't been, you know, there's not much new to report. I think they have revised a little bit, made it a little smaller in terms of their cultivation process. Their original plan for their cultivation process extended all the way to the back of the property and around. Right now, it's essentially they'll construct a building behind Right now, it's essentially they'll construct a building behind the, behind the store. And in there, there'll be a cultivation and manufacturing facility in there. It's about a 10,000 square foot building. The parking, it will be nicely landscaped. Improved, you know, with extended parking, you know, you know, so that there, that will be look much better than it does and it will actually go along the, be the east side of the property. So that I'm just doing this off the top of my head, Lorraine, so I'm not.
Now, it's just a
Cause I'm not really remembering, I'm not remembering the specifics of it is that closely, but they'll obviously have to be lighting, security, a fence line along on the back of the property where it abuts other residential properties.
Okay. Now, when someone comes to look at these new houses, the one, the proposed one and the two that are in process on Ashby Road here next, you know, beside that pot shop, are they notified that there's possibility of a pot shop going in there before they buy the house?
That's a very good question. I do not know the answer to that question. I, I, I do, I do.
I said, no, they wouldn't be. Well, not now unless there, there's some formal butter notification.
If they, if they're going through a responsible. Responsible.
Three sessions.
Is that?
That's, that's the other meeting in progress here. What I would say is there will be notification to a butters of the special permit public hearing with the Board of Selectmen when that is held at some point in the future. As far as the planning, planning board, we would have, it would be an application for site plan review. If there's no variances requested, then there wouldn't be a public hearing for the planning board. But I just would say that realtors are aware of when there's interest in that property over the last couple, you know, few years. What their relationship with their client is again, as Walt said, I, you know, that's up to them. But, you know, the meetings that we've been held by the marijuana review team, the community outreach meeting and discussion that's on planning board is public. Public advertise on the agendas. It's on the town website.
Yeah, I've seen that.
It, it's, you know, but as far as a formal notification would only be if there's a special permit here.
And just one more quickie, which does anyone know where the well and the septic system are for that store and how it would affect the little lot? Little Lot C or three or whatever they call it, where he's proposing the house.
Hotel where they's proposing the.
That's a house now. It's going to be a single family house this time.
Take a look at that through the building department.
Well, it's indicated on the application.
I didn't see, I looked at the application.
If you, you can contact Heather, it should, you've seen the application?
I have.
For the special permit, that indicates the septic system for that, that single family home.
Yeah, not, not, I'm just wondering how close it is to the, cause it's such a small property, small lot. I'm just wondering how close it is to the well or septic of the country store.
From what I saw on that application, the zone around the, the well for the single family home is entirely within that property. And I believe that the zone of requirement around the well of the country store is entirely on that property. So that would be the Board of Health.
Yeah, okay.
It should be the Board of Health.
Okay, the Board of Health, I believe, has approved the septic plan for that single family home, so.
And just one more and then I'll stop. Have any of these other marijuana proposals gone any further? Are there already marijuana shops or growing facilities in town or?
Not officially, no, but there are several in process.
How many, how many are allowed in town?
Well, there's only, I, the only one that has a limit on the licenses are if it's retail operation. And Eddie's Flowers at that location are the only, is the only retail operation that the marijuana review committee has viewed. There is Evo Kana, I think they're changing their name. That's in South Ashburnham and that's the manufacturing facility that's going in an, an old, you know, warehouse building. And that is, that's, that's maybe a year away from actually being in operation. They've already gone to the Board of Selectmen and already have put together their community host agreement. There's another green. I'm forgetting their name, but it's a very small growing facility. And when I say very small, it's essentially a, a house, the size of a house, growing facility that's, where is that on Hardy Road?
No, it's on Young Road.
On Young Road.
I was gonna say, I hope it's not on Hardy Road, cause that's kind of just across the street here.
No, no.
Across the street from me.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Lucky duck.
But it's, it's pretty. But both of, both of those are really facilities that are designed to be very unnoticed, you know, discreet. You know, for obvious reasons. And there was one more talked about, but it hasn't come before the MRT before.
Yeah, cause I have looked at.
And that was a growing one too. That was a growing facility as well.
Yeah, and what about adjoining towns? If like, if they put a marijuana shop here, we have one already kind of around the corner down the road, but it's actually not in Ashburnham. But it's really quite close to, does that come into consideration at all?
Not for us really, because it's a matter, that's a market question for the grower. We would probably ask in an MRT meeting, you know, you know, what's your competition or where are your market, you know, what's the market? You know, because we, as a town, we don't want these facilities to come in and then fail.
Right.
Cause if they fail, then, you know, we're sort of left holding the bag and in an awkward circumstance. But to be honest with you, Lorraine, we're pretty new to this and we're just sort of learning as we go.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? We go back to the.
Yeah, we're back to subdivision updates.
Okay. Thank you for keeping me on track here.
Five days a week in full time and, you know, perhaps stepping aside from the academic, again, worries that people are putting on the table and focus on the social, emotional and mental health.
Haven't received anything else as far as subdivision updates, nothing from. Nothing from Bray Avenue.
And the change.
Just, we had the preliminary application for Lily Hill. Wrote that up and Heather has that. And let's see. Go back to the subdivisions. Change of use for 84 Main Street. I know there's been a little more work on it by the building commissioner, but nothing for us at this point till they figure out what they want to do, have a specific question to ask us and attend the meeting. Then D L T A. That the selectmen's meeting last week, there was a little bit of discussion about and with Lorraine from the Open Space Commission about their requirement that the open space plan needs to be updated. I think it expires in November. Until November, we can, town can, can apply for grants once that application expires and it limits what they can apply for grants. The question was how to go about getting that updated. Do we do it through D L T A? And I, they had some correspondence that they could forward it to everyone from Karen Chapman MRPC with alternatives options for dealing with the open space plan, whether it's through a D L T A application. Or through other grants or just as a town expense to have MRPC updated. I think there's some indication of whether open space wants to do majority of it on their own and then we use our MRPC mapping time to update any maps. I said, I think our recommendation last time we met was to apply for the D L T A to update the zoning map. And I just, just, oh, and answer back to the selectman. With that information from Karen and any change in, in our feeling of what we should apply for. I can, I can let them know on Monday, Tuesday, the next meeting. My feeling is, is still the same as I've expressed previously that our best option for a D L T A round three grant is a small request for a small task by one of the other divisions of MRPC and not to further burden the planning staff there with another request that until we get, you know, completion on the ones they're currently working on and I got to start for us as part of the first two requests. So my recommendation is that we continue with what we agreed to previously of requesting the zoning map be updated. That's something that can be done fairly quickly, a matter of months. If it does get approved and it's, it's useful to us and in the immediate for building commissioner, making determinations on where district boundaries are and other things, so.
I think that's a good one, Roger.
Anyone else?
I agree.
Okay, and Richard?
I agree.
So we're, we're all in agreement that we don't change our minds and I will.
That's better, yeah.
I will forward that letter off right away to MRPC with that request so that we're you know, the front of the line. My feeling on it is we were successful in, in round one. There was still some money left, so they had a round two. They received two requests by the application deadline. One of them was us, so we got something around two. Twenty-two member towns, you know, it's still trying to divide up the pie. That's why I suggested if we're going to get anything, it will be something small, so.
No, I think that's.
Get that in and we'll hope, hope for the best with that one. Bylaw updates. We discussed. What's that?
And I think we just went over them.
We did. If there's any others, Building Commissioner, there's some that, you know, we had talked about early in the, in this, the year about what to have ready and there's a few small ones just to go on the, you know, for the next town meeting in the fall. And I don't hope that the bylaw review committee is ready with anything at this point to go forward with, so. There is.
Yeah.
The swimming pool fence correcting that statement in the bylaw essentially just to say that it's regulated by the state building code. Field for the building commission was change it to that and leave it in the bylaw. The other one is to find a definition, some additional definitions. We know we're lacking definition of a motel. Things like that. Small things that you folks can work on. Correspondence, let me bring that up. Oops, I just saw it. All the excitement of budding towns hearing notices. Notice of decision from City of Gardner. Regarding Jersey Community Church, 112th Central Street. That was for the use of the former.
Yeah, I'll just say, you know, unlike you guys, I, I live with the virtue.
Was Sacred Heart. School. To reuse portion of that as a restaurant. City Gardner. Agenda for a
So.
On April 20th, if anyone would like to attend. From the City Gardner decision. Keeping of chickens on Central Way.
Off their school committee is, it was like, well, NSBA better change.
Mail down to us too, right? Roger.
Email went out to you, yes. It's okay. Public hearing in Ashby. April 14th, so zoom in. Whatever that was for is for bylaw updates.
After wrapping up, so I can attend that public hearing.
Okay, on, on chickens. Okay, so we'll stop the show on that. Any other correspondence we have? That was it. And other town boards and committees. Richard, anything from economic development?
Good.
Okay, Walt.
Sorry, you already heard the MRT.
Okay. Anything from?
Nothing to really report for that and from the bylaw review committee. We're.
When we saw.
We have found. We have recommended.
But it was a great session.
Experience and more well and I can't really hear over myself, Roger.
I can't hear you either.
Yeah. So, so the bylaw review committee is, we recommended going with a consultant E code or company who specializes in municipal town bylaws and organizations. They gave a very impressive presentation, so we're moving forward. We've recommended that to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Selectmen are taking action on, on whether to go in that direction or not. And we are continuing to work through the bylaws. We're still in the general bylaws, not in these. Uh, bylaws, not in the zoning bylaws yet. So very little of what we've discussed so far has to do with the zoning bylaws, but then we're, uh, we will be. Working our way through the current bylaws. And just making our notes and our comments. So when E code, if they come on board. Is hired, we'll be prepared to share those comments to them and then they'll help us um, organize it. Present it and sort of navigate, you know, the challenges of making changes to bylaws. And those are the only two updates I have.
Okay. There's a meeting tomorrow night for the Capitol. Planning. Um, committee, uh, and joint meeting with advisory board to discuss budget items for the town, for the town war. Then I attended the MJTC meeting today. And tried to get some little more input on uh, where we stand with Route one oh one. On the tip, it's still on for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. And the motion was made and, and other things to, to send the uh, the tip modifications out to the twenty-one day. Period of public comment. Again, nothing's, nothing's changed on that. I think they can discuss it more next week as far as the selectmen and things and with the M P O for keeping that project on track. M R P C, we had the uh, last month, the annual. Review of the audit with the auditor. And uh, there's no M R P C meeting in April because we had to in, in March, so we're back on for. For a meeting in May. That will, I guess at this point, uh, as my term is ending, I will be ending my services representative. For the planning board. As a planning board member. I can continue on as the planning board's appointed member to the MJTC, cause that does not, that's open to. Uh, anyone that the board wants to appoint, so I can continue in that capacity. For the near term.
Do you want to continue in that capacity?
Yes. Unless.
Great. Involved.
Unless the board would like to recommend to have, has a s- a stack of other applicants interested in serving in that capacity. Again, as Skip is indicating, does not want to renew as the associate number, so um. You folks who, well, with your new member will have to. Pick a associate member.
Is that something you'd be interested in, Roger?
I'd say the letter was written, I haven't sent it. But I guess at some point, uh, either next week, we should just have to. Advertise the, the opening and solicit. From the vast majority of interested parties. That waiting list of people wanting to be on town boards and committees. Then. Anything else? Administrative administrative matters, I sent out a, today, I, from the citizens planning trading collaborative and other notice for a. Training session on the topic is forty B. Regulations, so uh. If anyone's interested in attending that. I'd recommend that the town spend the twenty dollars apiece and uh, send as many people who would like to go to that. You never know when we could get another application. Where so far below the uh, the threshold. Of affordable housing units, um, that were ripe and open to uh. Any of those projects. And nothing new on the. Chapter forty-eight zoning law requirements, I know the. What is selectmen has uh, another. A grant that they're working on for. That will address in, in, in portion, the uh. Higher density housing requirement of the. State law. That would be it, I think. And all the town is working on. Making sure some how to proceed with updating the town website, so. Any recommendations anyone has for how planning board stuff should be displayed on the website? And what should be displayed? Again, updating planning board forms in conjunction with the bylaw review committee. I think Walt, you have what I sent you and. I, as far as what I noticed of things that are need to be corrected and uh, I know Sarah has. Bunch of things she wants to add to it. I just suggested that one person be the keeper of the master file of that.
I have to confess, I have not really studied it.
Then uh, I guess once she inputs what her comments are, then she can send it to you and.
Yeah, I'll take a look, a better look.
You can be the keeper of the master file.
And we have minutes, right?
Okay.
I sent out some minutes, sorry, I'm rushing.
Yeah.
Background.
Yeah, well, that's, that's fine. I will mute myself and uh. If you want. To post the minutes or do you wanna, you wanna bring them up?
Do I need to? Did everybody read them? Do we have any changes?
I don't have any comments. Only come. So if uh. No one wants to make a motion to approve the minutes, any corrections for anyone?
I don't see any corrections to offer.
Okay. Can always be amended at a later date if you come up with any. Make a motion to, go ahead, Lindsay.
Yep, I was gonna say, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Alright, go to roll call vote. Walt Meisner?
Yes.
Lindsay Butler?
Yes.
Richard Wright? And Roger Hoyt, yes. So the motion case, that was March twenty-fourth. Hold on just a second, are there any others that we haven't?
Yeah, I have to admit, I was feverishly before this meeting. Uh, pulling my notes together on the February twenty-fourth minutes that. Lindsay was not able to attend.
Okay.
Uh, I, it was a tedious meeting. That was much more difficult than I recalled and I went back and listened to the hour and a half tape of it. And so I didn't quite finish it before today's meeting, but I have it in a condition now that. I should be able to forward it to everybody for this weekend and we can. Definitely, everybody can read it and go over it before the next, next week and I promise. Prove next week.
And was there something in the twenty-third of February also?
That was the combined open. Open space.
Yeah.
Planning board meeting.
I had done, so those are, I believe those have already been approved too.
Yes, they have, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I just need to post some then and um. Who would like to be the uh. Have the record to um, the password to do the agenda? Or do you want to just have Heather do it until you?
How to do that?
Someone to do it?
Yeah.
Just let Heather do it?
If she do it.
Yeah, okay. I just need to uh. Hand off the uh. Access to my town government. That's it. Don't see anything else, so if we.
Oh, I moved to adjourn.
During, okay, I'll do a roll call second, I'll second that, with a roll call vote, Lindsay Butler?
Yes.
Richard Wright? Yes, Richard, say yes. Walt Meisner?
Yes.
And Roger Hoyt, yes. Thank you, folks. We adjourned at seven fifty-one.
Hi, yeah.
Thank you.
Good weekend.
See you next week. You're gonna have a busy year.
Absolutely will.
More than you know.